Okay, at this time I'd like to call the city council meeting for April 25th to order. At this time, we will stand and have the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Councilmember Bonnell.
I just want everyone to reflect, meditate, pray, however you see fit. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item three, roll call by Madam Clerk.
Mayor Mahoney. Vice Mayor Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Nancy.
Present.
Councilmember Gunn.
Present.
Councilmember Schlechtie.
Yep.
Councilmember Vanel.
Here.
Councilmember Forgrave.
Roll has been called. Am I supposed to say something else at this point? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain the motion to adopt the agenda, item four.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item 10.1, under other business. Homeless update. I know you pulled it, I still think it needs to be on the agenda.
Oh, can you...whatever you want to do. Could there be no one here to talk about it?
Yeah, that's fine.
What I would recommend you do is either at the time or now, also put it on the next agenda.
Okay, at the time. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and second.
I'll support.
Oh, sorry. Are there any other changes for the agenda? Here none, we'll take the vote.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Motion passes, five to zero. We have no presentations or proclamations tonight, so we will move on to item six, public hearing. Item 6.1, conduct a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the approval of a Brownfield Plan for 228 West Michigan Avenue Hayes Hotel.
I make a motion to open the public hearing. Support.
It's been properly moved and second to open the public hearing. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak to this item?
Do we have to vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, now we can entertain. Motion passes, five to zero. We have one request, Peter Bormuth.
Peter Bormuth, 142 West Pearl Street. I want to say that I've been supportive of all the various hotel Hayes renovations, and it's glad to see this one finally, possibly, coming to fruition. I don't think there's a more important thing for the future of Jackson than, you know, getting that hotel renovated and getting that density of population downtown and, you know, forming that pillar on this side of the city. So I am totally in support of this resolution for the Brownfield Plan for 228 West Michigan, and I encourage council to vote in support.
Thank you. Any other?
I make a motion to close the public hearing. I support.
It's been properly moved and second to close the public hearing, and at this time we'll entertain...oh, we had to take a vote on that, right? I want to move too quick. So now we need to vote on the resolution. I don't have to read anything on this, do I? At this time, I'll entertain the motion to approve the resolution in support of Brownfield for 228 West Michigan.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Do I ask for more support or any comments from the council, or is this not? Are there any comments from council?
None.
Okay. So at this time, Madam Clerk, we will take the vote. Motion passes, six to zero. Do we need to note that we'll just came in, or that I've already noted? Okay. And at this time, we'll move on to item seven, citizens' comments. I'll follow as the mayor does. Rules for speaking before the city council. Each speaker will state their name and address prior to addressing the council. Each speaker is limited to up to three minutes during the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Council members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Each speaker should be polite and courteous to the council and members of the public in attendance. While any speaker is free to express his or her opinion on any subject, no speaker may direct personal attacks at any member of staff or council unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties, use obscene language while addressing the city council, or engage in disruptive or disorderly behavior during council meetings. Should any speaker cause a breach of the peace through their conduct, the mayor, vice mayor, may declare the speaker out of order. If a speaker is declared to be out of order, the vice mayor, refused to cease and refuse and cease to desist their disruptive, disorderly conduct, the mayor may order the person removed from the meeting. Each speaker may speak once under public comments and not yield their time to others. So do I just take this one? First, we have Charles Schmucker.
My name is Charles Schmucker, and my issuer, my comment would be, myself in specific, had a house broken into in the city of Jackson, in a very nice area I would consider, over by Bloomfield Park. Lived in Jackson my whole life. I don't even believe I was targeted. Lots of people in my neighborhood, streets over, east, west, north, and south, everybody keeps getting broken to over there. Not saying it shouldn't happen in a nice area versus a bad area. Called the police, reported. They come out. I had an officer with the Jackson Police Department, I won't say his name, to call him out directly. Called this man and left three voicemails with him to get back with me. Never ever heard nothing back. This incident was on April 3rd. Started calling him on the 4th throughout the next week, my insurance company. Contacting him, contacting him, contacting him. Won't ever get back with him. At what point does a citizen, what more can we do? It's getting bad out there.
I was going to say, we're not able to debate or comment.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for a debate, but it just needs to be brought to attention. Just happened into random citizens, and there's been nothing done about it. I lived over there for six months. It's been happening the whole time. Finally happened to me. Now I'm here. Now it's on record. Maybe we can get some more patrols. I get pulled over for my vehicle because I got nice wheels and tires. It takes the police 40 minutes to harass me for that. They can't take that time and go do something where lots of crime is being committed? That's all.
Thank you. Next comment from Tina Dietzen.
Hi, my name is Tina Deech, and I'm from Horton, Michigan. And I'm here to speak tonight on the Racial Equity Commission purchasing changes that you guys are considering. I see that the changes are signed by Keisha Hamilton, and first of all, as a black person, if I were Keisha, I'd be embarrassed. It's a disgrace as a black person to suggest that a minority would need to be given preferential treatment in order to receive what should be coming to them by merit. Isn't this a knock to the people of color and minorities to say that unless you give us preferential treatment, we're not able to compete with others? We are less than them, and we need to have special favors. You see, the whole thing behind equity is that equity takes away opportunity and resources from others. It's actually redistribution for the unachievable promise of equal outcome for all. Although it promises utopia, it ignores personal agency and effort while dismantling the foundations of our society, which made our nation exceptional. Equality is a tenant of racial justice efforts in critical race theory and leads us down the road to socialism, to socialism. Equity jeopardizes liberty. We believe in equal opportunity over equal outcome. Equality, meaning equality of opportunity, is a human right outlined in the Declaration of Independence, which guarantees our own alienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We are a nation of overcomers with countless real-life stories, those who have risen above adversity to create the impossible. What a sad day it is for Keisha Hamilton and anyone else who supports this change to the purchasing agreement to admit that because a person's skin color, you demand special treatment because you're unable to compete on your own merit.
Thank you. Next, we have Cheryl Vidito.
Hello, yes, my name is Cheryl Vidito. It's short, but it's still hard to pronounce. But anyway, so I wanted to talk to you all also about 11.7, item on your agenda, Racial Equity Commission Purchasing Policy Revisions. And I just wanted to say that I think all contracts that are awarded should be based on merit. You know, I think that is the most important. You should be awarding contracts that will provide the most benefit to the citizens of the city of Jackson. If you're going to keep your oath of office, that's what's important. And so I just wanted to make that point, and then also, if you look at the Constitution, it says, "The state shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in the operation of the public employment, public education, or public contracting." For the purposes of this section, state includes, but is not necessarily limited to, the state itself, any city, county, any public college, university, or community college, school, district, or other political subdivision of governmental instrumentality of or within the state of Michigan, not included in subsection one. So I think if you guys do award contracts based on, you know, someone's racial background, I think you're going to be breaking some laws. I think you're going to have some businesses that could band together and could be upset. I'm afraid that the city could end up maybe getting even sued. And so I just, you know, you need to base the contracts based on merit and not on one's racial color or background. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Biddinger.
Sorry, in advance for the speed reading. Jennifer Biddinger, and I am really grateful to the city council members who questioned the proposed amendments last meeting to our purchasing policies and procedures. I have attended a number of racial equity meetings and have never heard of their proposals regarding these changes, which unfortunately leads me to believe that it was a secret attempt to pass it through public or without public awareness. The REC claims that this is desired by the community, very slanted. This equity framework is not desired by large amounts of the constituents, and only those that are deceived by and support the policies of CRT are trying to slip it into our government practices. CRT is anti-American. America is about freedom, individual equality, not group equity, and not equal outcomes, which is similar to communism and Marxism. CRT believes that your skin color defines your ability to succeed. This is a lie from the elites that want to control and divide our country, not to mention destroy our beliefs that God created all men equal. I have such compassion for our children who are bombarded with destructive ideas that they must suffer with intergenerational guilt and are limited by their race, sex, or disadvantages. That is certainly not God's plan and not according to our state and national constitutions. Do we want to stand for injustices and oppose racism? Yes, but the solution is not to divide us into groups and mandate certain privileges to any particular group. I myself am only a part of one of these groups, and it is offensive to me to be considered socially and economically disadvantaged. God made me a woman, and I'm thankful. I shouldn't be given an advantage of a purchasing contract simply for that reason, and no man should be denied. It is a slap in the face to Martin Luther King's dream and all that he stood for, not to be judged by the color of their skin, or in my case, my gender, but by the content of their character. Also, have you heard, our state constitution does say that we cannot grant preferential treatment to, based on race, sex, et cetera, in the operation of public contracting. Does this not clearly show the problems with these attempts to give preferential treatment? And as far as the additions throughout the purchasing manual, it is very confusing as to what it means after review of the bidder status. Very subjective and unclear. And what kind of governmental control will be given to this NMSDC after being written into the manual? Changes are only an attempt to install CRT into our city government, and we need to stop it. We already have written into section 3.2(c), the purchasing agent is to buy without prejudice. Please do not contribute to the wicked CRT agenda to incite race warfare, name-calling, and intimidation. Thank you for allowing the people to speak on this matter, and I pray that you will use wise judgment as to how you will proceed.
Thank you. Next, we have William Hastings.
Hi, before I begin and before you start running the clock, I have some copies, some printouts, this is the relevant information, the relevant language from the Michigan Constitution about this issue of purchasing. As the crosshatch, I have enough for the, all the council members and for the...
It normally comes...
Agatha and Green, and I guess if you want to share, then Mrs. Murray.
It should come through the clerk, though. It should come from the clerk.
Oh, I asked before, so I could just come up and give them. I apologize. I spoke here two weeks ago about a aggressive panhandling in Jackson and an aggressive panhandler who positioned himself right next to the payments box in front of City Hall. And when I walked out of City Hall that evening, guess what happened next? I was personally handled right in front of the building that night, two weeks ago tonight. If you do not see the accelerating rot and decay in this city, both physical and ethical, you are willfully blind. So this council's entertaining a proposal tonight from the City Racial NV Commission to radically overturn the city's purchasing practices and create new race and sex-based standards and quotas. Let's do a very quick run-through of this measure. Section 3.2j says there will be 20% purchase contract quotas each set aside for women and minorities. That is highly illegal under state and federal law. Section 3.2o, subsection 10, the purchasing agent must use the race and sex of the bidder in judging the bid. That is illegal under Michigan law. Section 6.2d, the contract will be awarded, check this out, will be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder only after the review of the bidder's race and sex and other status. Section seven, they're playing around with the sealed bids process, color me surprised. Section seven, 7a, the city council has the authority to accept or recommend the acceptance of other than the lowest responsive bid after a review of the bidder's DBE or MBE, i.e. race or sex status. So the race or sex of the bidder will trump the actual quality of the bid. This is what the proposal says. What does the Michigan State Constitution say about all this? What does state civil rights law state specifically about contracting? Article 1, section 26 of the Michigan Constitution states, "The state shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in public contracting." It's right there, it's not gray area, it's black and white. Not only is this the law in Michigan, this specific statute was upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court in 2014. This proposal is 100% illegal and will result in a richly deserved onslaught of lawsuits against the city of Jackson. This will be the biggest legal debacle in city history. Whatever individual opinion anyone on this body or in this room might have about this language does not, cannot, and will not contravene Michigan civil rights law and the Michigan Constitution. City law does not trump the Michigan Constitution, that's ludicrous. This is a full frontal assault on civil rights in Jackson, Michigan, which will reward the cronies of city employees and office holders while ripping off taxpayers. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Vice Mayor, for holding it down for me.
You're welcome.
Fred Trexler.
My name is Fred Trexler, 4113 Spring Harbor Road, Jackson. We can all agree that the city of Jackson should not punish interracial marriages. In the revision to the City of Jackson Purchasing Policy Manual, a disadvantaged business enterprise, or DBE, is defined as a local business where 51% is owned by a minority person or group. This discriminates against a business owned jointly by an interracial couple, where each owns 50%. This is wrong. Section 3.2(c) in the purchasing agreement, purchasing, lists the responsibility of the purchasing agent, "To buy without prejudice, conduct all transactions on a strictly ethical basis, avoid all forms of commercial bribery and legal entanglements." Yet, section 3.2.j sets a purchasing contract award ratio for each such group as at least 20% for minority business enterprises and women business enterprises. I can't tell whether that means 40% for the two groups, or whether it's 20% for the whole thing. Section 7.7.a gives the city council authority to reject any and all bids and to accept other than the lowest responsive bid after review of bidder's DBE, MBE, or WEB status. And in section 16.1, tie bids are awarded by evaluating the services based on factors addressing equity and ownership. And as you have already heard, the Michigan State Constitution gives equal protection and on discrimination, it says, "No person shall be denied the equal protection of laws, nor shall any person be denied the enjoyment of his civil or political rights, or be discriminated against in the exercise thereof because of religion, race, color, or national origin." Clearly, the revisions to the purchasing policy manual are designed to discriminate against businesses owned by white or pink-skinned people. This violates the Michigan Constitution and should be rejected. Thank you.
Mr. John C. King.
John King, 203 Third Street, here in the city. First, Ms. Mayor, last time I asked you to explain where you disagree with Keisha Hamilton, you complimented the city clerk on her African-American mask and accessories and some other things, but forgot to answer my question. If you could write down a reminder right now and answer the question during certain council member comments, it would be great. If you also would explain what your nonprofit or nonprofits are and what they do and what other nonprofits and organizations they closely work with, that would be great, too. Speaking of Keisha Hamilton, she and the Racist Equity Commission want to see that measurable outcomes, or in other words, quotas are achieved in purchasing. The city should be looking at how to get the best product or service at the best price. The quotas suggested will see that as not done and hit, and as has been mentioned, are illegal. Mention of April of 2018 being the last time the manual was revised, was mentioned, which refers to the early reign of Derek Dobie as mayor. The suggested changes to the policy manual are just the ramping up of those politics. Speaking of these politics of race, Joe Biden in the last few days met with a Tennessee three insurrectionists. He came out that one of the expelled ones was with others blocking the streets in 2020, and then used a traffic cone to assault a driver that had stopped. The leftist prosecutor refused to see he faced justice in court. The other of the two turns out to have been a preppy in college six years ago, but recently has taken on the persona of a 1960s activist with a large afro. While the mainstream media has been the enemy of the truth on that... While the mainstream media has been the enemy of the truth on that, they've also been so on the shootings of people going on someone else's property. They played up the young black man shot by a white 84-year-old man, and that could only have been racism, but they didn't play up the others, such as the black man that shot a six-year-old white girl trying to retrieve her basketball. A stat I heard mentioned in the last week was that of all the murders, according to FBI statistics, in which it was a black and white perpetrator and victim, 84% of the time, the perpetrator was black, far from what the media tries to portray. I posted the same politics in which I see the final report from Residents in Action, which was on this agenda originally, it's now been taken off. There is no data available online. As I mentioned, Ri's so-called homeless efforts were a big con job in order to have access to a cash grab of the city's art funding. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth?
Peter Bormuth, 142 West Pearl Street. I want to talk about a brazen abuse of power here at the city. As you all know, we have an election commission, and we reapportioned our ward lines. And when that happened, Mayor Mahoney appointed Connor Woods to the election commission. Connor Woods happened to be the Democratic chairperson in Jackson County. Connor Woods provided one map, and Andrea Murray provided another, and the election commission provided both of those to this city council. And we know that Laura Schlechtie at the time thought that that map had been drawn specifically to move her out of the 4th Ward. And Connor Woods came here and claimed that that was a complete lie and fabrication. I want everyone to know who is now running for 4th Ward City Council. Connor Wood. This is self-serving, self-interest on the election commission, and you all sitting up here, with the exception of Laura, voted for it. I'm appalled by this self-service. All right? I want to say that this is the same thing that Connor Wood did with the state senator election. Who did he put in that slot to run from Jackson County? His wife, the completely unqualified Kelsey Heck Wood. And Mayor Mahoney, once again, you helped her by pointing her to the library board before her race so that she would have some qualification other than the fact that she's bisexual. I want to say that this type of abuse of our institutions, this type of abuse of our committees is not acceptable. Thank you.
Amador Ibarra?
My name is Amador Ibarra. I live at 230 Summit Street in Jackson. I want to commend the Racial Equity Commission for the work they have done to present the Revised Purchasing Policy Manual and Agenda Item 11.7. The proposed provisions give me great hope for the future of the city of Jackson. It's great to see the city of Jackson leading the way in addressing, adopting, and revising policies which provide a more racially equitable government and community. The revisions presented for your approval will go a long way toward providing a more level playing field for minority and women-owned businesses to compete for lucrative city contracts. I support the revisions as proposed here and ask this body to approve the revisions. Approving these revisions will provide opportunities for contractors who have previously been prevented from participating completely in the bidding process. Approval of these revisions will encourage increased growth in Jackson by providing an equitable contracting process. Approval of these revisions will help to showcase Jackson as a place where all contractors, businesses, and entrepreneurs can thrive. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Brown. I live in Summit Township. I'm here to talk about the proposal 11.7. Why does the government, schools, media, and companies like Bud Light, Nike, Facebook, et cetera, want to cause division? Keisha Hamilton has bought into this ideology that white people are the root and cause of all their problems. When you buy into this propaganda, it keeps you at a slave mentality. When everything is about race, you can be controlled. What is the objective when you're at war? Divide and conquer. What happened in Germany in 1929? They set up programs at the schools for the only privileged kids, that these programs would make the children think they were better than other children. After doing this for 10 years, the media told the Jews' businesses were bad, so the Jews lost their income and couldn't feed their families. And when Hitler came to power, it was easy to round up the Jews. It was what they had been taught and told by the media for years. Keisha and so many councils and board members have bought into the scam, the same ideology and lies. It is sad how so many people who are so educated can be so fooled. Thank you for listening, and maybe one day you'll see the truth in what we are really fighting for.
Jan Torga?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Most of the time, we can't hear many of you. You mumble, you don't talk into your microphones, and I think it's only respectful of the people that are here, that we can hear each and every one of you. And another thing, that board is not fixed. That is our way of knowing which of our commissioners voted. What do you mean?
It shows on the screen.
I can't see it. You need that board where the lights up against your names. So anyway, and I'm here to speak on the 11.7, the Racial Equity Commission Purchasing Policy Revisions. In the United States, commerce is driven by free enterprise, a free market, free of government regulations, but defined by a set of legal rules where market determines the prices, products, and services other than the government. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, that concludes citizens' comment. Brings us to item number eight, petitions and communication from city staff and other governmental entities looking for a motion and support to accept and place unfound a Michigan Liquor Commission acknowledgment letter for House of Umami LLC.
So moved. I had to turn my mic on.
Yeah, because we don't want to be mumbling, not into the microphones. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote, which will be displayed Motion passes unanimously.
We can't see that. I don't see it.
I'm sorry. It is on the screen, though. I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
I said, "I'm sorry."
We still can't see it.
I'm sorry. Order. Order. Brings us to item number 8.2, CDBG Home and CV Financial Summaries for March 2023.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Brings us down to item number nine, Consent Calendar. Looking for a motion and support on this consent calendar.
Support.
It's been moved and supported.
I'd like to pull item 9.8 up for a separate, but I have a question, so. Consideration. I'll support that.
All right. Any discussion on the rest of the consent agenda, with the exception for 9.8? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the votes. Brings us down to item 9.8, looking for a motion and support on the Special Event Application for the Council of Prevention of Child Abuse and Neglect Banner Hanging and Pinwheel Guarding to Honor Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I'll make a motion to approve it for discussion.
It's been moved and supported. Laura, did you want to open us up for discussion?
Yeah, my question is, the event date says April 6, 2023. So did we forget it? Is it wrong? Or was it supposed to be May? Because I think we're on April 25 today.
You know, I can't answer that.
So I do know that the event took place already.
Okay.
I don't know if this is something in addition to that, or if maybe the application got in late. I'm not sure. That I don't know.
If I had to guess and put words in a whole bunch of people's mouths, I think they're just trying to, while there is some change over the DDA who manage this process, just make sure things got approved, even if it was post-fact, so it could be
All right, I just, if it was supposed to be in May, I just
I don't think so.
Or maybe it's supposed to be April 6, 2024, and they're really ahead of their schedule. But, okay.
Having done those for a long time, I will say there is absolutely zero organizations out there who have that much together.
Okay.
Corey can second that one.
All right. Well, there you go.
Any other discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Passes unanimous. That takes Okay, item 10.1.
Yeah.
And I don't know what it is.
It's the homeless conversation.
Okay.
I added it back on.
Yeah, and that was my fault for taking it off, because what I meant to do was have you guys recognize that Tasha couldn't be here tonight, and then, since you moved to put it on for tonight, moved to put it on to the next meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move it to the first meeting in May, whatever that date is. I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the motion?
I think the citizens, it's a justifiable reason why it's not on there, but I do think that there should be an explanation as to why it's not on there.
So her daughter is in the hospital, so she couldn't be present today. So she will be at the next meeting and apologize for her absence.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, doesn't pop up. Sorry. I was waiting for it to pop up.
Okay, passes unanimous, and the report, wrap-up report from Residents in Action will be moved to next month. Brings us down to new business. Item 11.1, looking for a motion and support for changes to the standard lighting contract with Consumers Energy.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote.
I was getting that look from Andrea.
I even got the checkmark.
Okay, there we go. Okay, vote is unanimous. Brings us down to 11.2, looking for a motion and support to confirm the CDBG and home projects for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and final funding allocation for those projects.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. And the item passes unanimously. Brings us down to 11.3, looking for a motion and support for funding letters for pension systems.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item?
I just want to point out that the mileage is going down by .1.
Passes unanimous. Brings us down to 11.4, looking for a motion and support to approve the sale of city-owned property located at 323 West Wesley Street to North Shore Enterprises LLC. Authorize the city manager to sign all sale documents associated with the property transfer and to make minor modifications.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item?
Do we know if this is going to be owner-occupied?
This is not going to be owner-occupied. This is actually being purchased by a local business who intends to rent it to one of their employees.
Was it on the open market?
It was definitely on the open market.
Item passes unanimously. 11.5, approve the sale of four vacant residential city lots to the Welcome Home Organization. Lots are identified as 1203 Woodbridge, 1201 Woodbridge, 1226 Woodbridge, and 1227 Woodbridge, and authorize city manager to execute the sale and development agreement.
So moved, Ms. Mayor. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. And item passes unanimously. Item 11.6, looking for a motion and support to approve the sale of city-owned property located at 1014 Woodbridge Street to Kyle Brown for $7,500. Authorize the city manager to sign all documents associated with the property transfer and to make minor modifications.
So moved, Ms. Mayor. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item?
This one owner-occupied, going to be on.
This one is not This, this one is not owner-occupied. The condition of the house is not really conducive to someone taking on that job and living in it, so they're going to try to make some money on it. Fixing it up and flipping it, or fixing up and having it be rental.
Item passes unanimous. Brings us down to item 11.7, racial equity commission purchasing policy. Looking for a motion in support to approve the revisions to the City of Jackson purchasing policy manual as suggested by the Racial Equity Commission to provide equitable opportunities for those interested in providing services and goods and entering into contracts with the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion.
Matt, did you have some concerns?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schlechtie, and members of the council, I have reviewed the policy as proposed. There is one particular section that I do have some concern about. It's actually page five, item O, number 10. That provision I do believe should be deleted in its entirety for the benefit of council and the members of the audience, as it's been addressed during public comment. Article 26 of the Michigan Constitution was amended in December of 2006. It came on the heels of litigation that did go to the Supreme Court resulting from affirmative action policies at the University of Michigan. What that particular constitutional provision says in a nutshell, that the state and any of its subdivisions, including the City of Jackson or any other municipality in the state, cannot discriminate nor provide preferential treatment to anyone on the base of race, sex, gender, national origin, or identity in the award of public contracts. So that particular provision, the nuts and bolts of the purchasing policy, and many of these provisions existed previously before the Racial Equity Commission moved to amend. But the particular provision that I have concern with would arguably make a determination of whether or not you're, for example, a minority-owned business or a woman, women business enterprise, a factor in whether or not to award a contract, and that, under Michigan law, cannot be done. So at a minimum, that particular section, I would recommend a friendly amendment to the motion that that item number 10 be deleted in its entirety. The rest of the provisions, there's, there's nothing on its face unlawful with a review of anybody that submits a bid in accordance with the standard procedures and determine whether or not they're a women-owned or minority-owned business as defined under the purchasing policy. You simply can't make a recommendation to award on those factors that the Michigan Supreme Court has said you may not consider. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that provision, I believe, should be stricken from the policy as, as proposed.
Can you, can, I'm sorry, can you just repeat the section again for me?
Absolutely. It's section three, letter O, item number 10, that reads the DBE, MBE, or WBE status of the bidder. That provision should be deleted. And what that will do, again, is, is determine that the purchasing agent shall determine the lowest responsible bidder based upon, as it states, whoever has the lowest bid, which 99% of the time, absent exigent circumstances, council typically awards, to save taxpayer dollars, the lowest, the lowest bidder gets, gets the job. You also have some other factors that you can consider, items one through nine, none of which implicate the prohibitions in Article 26 of the Michigan Constitution. For example, the quality or performance of previous contracts. Did they do good work for the city previously? That has nothing to do with the prohibited considerations. So.
Just, can I just ask for a point of clarification on this? Is this, was this the intent? Because maybe we just need to move where it's at, because from my understanding, the intent was to be able to verify the actual status that the company itself was a DBE, MBE, or WBE, not that being the factor, the deciding factor. I guess I just need clarification on the intent.
I think the best way I can think to answer that, Mr. Mayor, is in the, what we talked about at the last meeting, pardon me, I'm going around. We wanted to, to make sure that if someone presented themselves as a WBE, DBE, MBE, that we vetted them to make sure they were actually who they said they were. And that's still in, in this, in this purchasing policy. What, what city attorney, Harry's talking about is, in this section, it speaks to the actual consideration of, of a contract or an award, and, and letter, I mean, letter O, number 10, says that the DBE, MBE, or WBE status should be considered. So that's what he's saying. So making sure people are who they say they are is still a part of it. Using it as a method to score an award can be, can happen.
Correct, correct. That's why I was just asking for clarification on the intent behind the, the, the item number 10 itself. Because if that was the intent, then I mean, I would, I would offer a friendly amendment to strike item number 10, 3O10, as a friendly amendment for approval.
Are we changing the language in O before you get to the numbers? Or is that staying the same?
I don't think so, because I think that's just saying that it would be confirmed if they are a WBE, MBE, or if DBE status will be reviewed and confirmed, that they actually legitimately are a woman-owned business, minority-owned business, or disadvantaged-owned business.
Because believe it or not, people have represented themselves as being one thing up here for city contracts, and they've been different. I know, it's crazy. No longer a city contractor for us, but this has happened.
Aren't we, isn't there somewhere where we're keeping track of?
Yeah, right, right on that. Oh, right on the base of O is where we're trying to do that.
Right. Keep track of what we have. So when, okay. Well, what, I defer to the city attorney as to what he wants to see, because he's the one who would have to defend or hire someone to defend us against lawsuits. And I don't think lawsuits are where we should be spending our money.
I agree with that. The, the, that particular section is repeated throughout the ordinance such that whoever files a bid, their status is reviewed. That doesn't mean they get any points of preferential treatment, are discriminated against, or given a priority on that basis. It simply means, as Manager Green referenced, we keep track of it. I don't want to, because the Racial Equity Commission proposed this, if that particular section were to be removed, you'd likely have to go back and look at all the other sections and potentially draft them accordingly. So two quick points. One, if, that's the druthers of council, it may be recommended that you simply remand this back to the Racial Equity Commission in, in light of the changes that I've suggested to make some further revisions to those specific provisions, the language you referenced, Councilman Schlechtie. The other thing I'd also point out, for the benefit of the audience and council, is there are specific regulations dealing with ARPA funds. If we've got a federal project that involves federal funds, there's actually requirements that we meet certain minority-owned and women-owned business criteria that's mandated by the Code of Federal Regulations. And that language is actually in the revisions to the policy. So you have the overlay of state constitution, federal law and requirements under the federal code, federal dollars and what's required, and then, of course, the language that's been drafted by the REC. My overarching concern is when you get down to how you actually determine the bid, you simply can't use race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin as a criteria in determining the bid.
So, Mr. Attorney, just for some, some clarification. The point of concern for you is specifically under section three, item O, point number 10.
That's correct.
Okay, so there, there's a motion on the floor for a friendly amendment to remove that item.
Can I expand on your friendly amendment to, to our city attorney's point to have it go back to racial equity to kind of tweak the other areas, just to make sure that everything lines up? If we're striking 10, it might make some of the other areas.
He was saying if we changed item O, the, the language in item O.
Okay.
If that were to be changed.
Even just by striking 10, that's not going to cause any issues with the rest of the policy?
I don't see it that way, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it doesn't, so.
What? So I know attorneys specialize in different areas of law. And it's important to get it right. Is, is this something that we should have outside counsel look at? Not that Matt isn't doing a good job, but I know he's got a lot of different things to look at. I mean, is there, like, someone had mentioned, sending it back to the Racial Equity Commission, and there, there may be an attorney on there, but I don't, that's not their job at that position. It's just a thought. I don't know if it's a good one or not. And we have sought outside counsel's opinion on other things in the past.
I, I guess I'm kind of confused in general. I mean, I, I understand the, the recommendation of the, of the attorney, and I appreciate that, that recommendation to remove that item. We don't want to do anything that's going to possibly cause us to be in position for litigation. But I asked several times in our last meeting, several times in our last meeting, what is the main point of concern with postponing this item? I asked multiple times. Is your concern that a employee was uninformed of how this was going to impact their job? Everybody up here said, yes, that's the major concern. I then asked, when this item comes back, Mr. City Manager, is this going to be the same document? The answer was yes. And then I asked again to the rest of the council. Is there concerns with the document, or just concerns with the fact that the employee does not understand how it's going to impact their job? Everyone said the issue was not with the document, that the issue was the fact that we had a employee who did not understand how this was going to impact their job. I am very concerned about why all of a sudden there's concerns with the document. Is, is, can I just get clarification that this is the same document from two weeks ago, or has it been revised again?
I think, I think John Willis took away some of the white space and made some formatting changes, and then we took into account that suggestions in the last meeting.
So the suggestions that were made last meeting
Yeah.
were, were put into consideration. The, the one item that the attorney said could potentially be an issue has been removed. Now we want to question the abilities of the attorney that, I mean, I wasn't on council when he was hired, but I mean, I'm pretty sure that all the council agreed he was a good enough attorney to hire a city attorney at that time. Now we want to consult an outside agency? On top of that, we have an attorney who's in the room, who sits on the Racial Equity Commission. This is, this is the work of people who we put in position to do the job that we asked them to do. I don't know what we're questioning here.
Mr. Mayor, there's a motion on the table to remove that section.
There is. Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. Any discussions on the motion on the table to remove section three, item O, specifically point number 10, to be removed?
Are we, this goes for a second reading, I assume?
It's not an ordinance, it's just your policy.
Oh, it's a policy. Okay.
Any other questions on the, the motion that's on the floor?
So for clarification, can we read what section is being removed?
Section three, item O, number 10, states the DBE, MBE, or WBE status of the bidder will be removed. Can I hear no other conversation on the motion on the floor? We are voting to remove that item.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading. I'm sorry, I'm reading down, just to see how that's gonna, how that's gonna impact what's written. Okay. I don't have any other questions on that. Oh, we're waiting for me. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to send the, the purchasing contract, as approved, to independent counsel for just review to make sure that our policies are in line with state and federal laws and not violating anything. I'm sorry?
I think we just approved the amendment. We haven't.
Oh, we haven't, we weren't approving the. All right, sorry.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor for, do we have a motion in support? Okay, so the, the amendment was made. Do we even need a vote on amending? Like, that was a friendly amendment, right? Do we even have to vote on that? Either way.
Well, I clearly have the same question.
Any other discussion on the, on the item on the floor? Seeing or hearing?
I do. Wanting to make sure this is being sent back to Racial Equity Commission, or is not?
The motion on the floor is to pass it.
Okay. But I thought I heard that it was to go back to the commission to make sure of where.
That's not the current motion that's on the floor. The current motion on the floor is for it to pass. I mean, if we can have further discussion on it if you wanted to, but I don't, I don't see any wisdom in sending it back to him. We've already had the attorney. If the concern is if anything is legal or illegal, we've already had the attorney mention the items that are in the policy that would, would be under question, and that item, we just voted to remove.
And I also thought, I heard him say, send it back.
No, that was the options that he gave us. He said, we could send the entire document back, or we could remove that one item. Again, I wish we could have clarified some of these concerns in our last meeting with the policy itself, because we could have had a deeper discussion instead of like, it being the misunderstanding that an employee didn't understand the impact that it would make under executing the policy change.
Well, I don't, this doesn't have anything to do with that. We were brought to our attention.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and nobody had any concerns about that the last meeting, and I asked like several times if there was concerns with the policy itself. Laura, I asked several times. Was there concerns?
Yeah, but we as counsel wouldn't necessarily, we don't have the expertise to look at this as an attorney, so we have to rely on our legal counsel.
But the concerns are coming up right now from council, and we're not, and we're not attorneys, like you said.
Right.
But the concerns are coming up right now presently.
Well, I don't think...
We've already had confirmation from our attorney on the item that should be removed, and we just voted to remove it.
Right, but I'm just defending counsel and saying, I don't think counsel is saying this is a problem, but we have to rely on the people that we put in place. And I am not saying that Matt Haggerty is not a competent attorney, but I do know from my time on city council that we have sent specialty items off for independent reviews to attorneys that specialize in that field. I'm not suggesting not passing this, but it could still go for council, for an attorney's review after it's passed, and if there are problems found, there's no reason that it can't come in front of council for changes. So, what I have suggested wouldn't hold this up for anybody to be treated fairly or equally within our purchasing policies.
And I'm just going to, not quite piggyback off, but I'm just going to kind of bring up a point, too. I mean, we had multiple constituents today come up raising their concerns about this that they didn't bring up last time, meaning they probably, exactly, they might not have known about it back then. So, we didn't know about their concerns literally until shortly before this meeting, or days before this meeting. So, we vote based on what they want and what they are asking us to vote on, not necessarily, not without our own opinions and our own judgment, but they didn't bring this up to us last week, and that's not, that's not their fault. That's just, this is something that they're bringing up now. So, obviously, we would want to, you know, take those considerations, or take those, you know, opinions into consideration for this meeting. Not necessarily that we didn't have those thoughts, or, you know, they just weren't brought to our attention in terms of what they wanted.
And a defense to Matt Haggerty, he is an attorney that's dealing with a lot of issues at City Hall, whether it's the AHB landlord issues, or employment contracts that we've been dealing with lately. The, so, for, I mean, he's brought it up to us before, I mean, he had it on notes before the citizens' comments.
And I understand his office deals with several items. He's not the only attorney in the office, though, and I don't think he's the only one who deals with AHB. So, I think that's a, like, that's a, like, kind of blurring the lines here. And again, my concern is not the concerns of the constituents by far. That's not my concerns. My concern is that council had no questions about this document that they reviewed and decided to postpone. And I think when we speak about constituents, there's a lot of constituents missing from the room who may speak otherwise about how they feel about this very document.
But they are not attorneys. They're not attorneys.
They're not here, they're not here, and they're not attorneys.
Okay, we're not attorneys, and so for you to scold us...
I'm not scolding you. I'm bringing a point up. I'm bringing a point up.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but it comes across as if you're scolding us.
I'm bringing a point up, because that's why I asked the questions last week, because my feeling was that there was more concern behind this than just what we postponed it for. And I was correct.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're getting off track a little on the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. We are back in order, and I appreciate that. Is there any other questions to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. 11.7, Racial Equity Commission Policy Revisions passes unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city attorney to get independent review of our purchasing policy for not just equity issues, but anything else that might be, since it has been revised substantially since the addition of the responsible contractors' coordinates.
Hearing no support, the motion dies. Moves us to Item 11.8, looking for a motion in support to approve the zoning map amendment, 523, five, excuse me, yeah, 523 to 543, East Washington Avenue and East Washington Avenue.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Item passes unanimously, brings us down to 11.9. Looking for a motion in support on the resolution to apply for a Transportation Economic Development Fund, Category F grant for repaving Wisner Street from Ganson Street to North Street.
So moved. Thank God.
It's been moved and supported. I think some support came from the crowd also. Okay, any discussion on the item?
Now, if we can get back a street repaid.
Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Passes unanimously. Brings us down to 11.10. Looking for a motion in support for the approval of American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds for the provisioning of governmental services in the general fund.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, and this is a provisioning of governmental services in the general fund in the amount of $4,514,997.74. Is there any discussion on the item?
Can we get a list of where the other money's been spent, an updated list?
Yeah, I can get that to you guys this week.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Item passes unanimously. And that brings us down to council member comments. Let's start with Councilmember Laura Schleck.
Okay, I wanted to read something that came across my email today. Megan Morris is why fair housing matters. Her story shows the difficult truths many have to face when it comes to finding a home. No one should have to go through the rough battle that I went through to try to find a place to live, she says. Everyone should be given equal opportunity to do everything. The Fair Housing Center of Southeast and Mid Michigan is proud to be an advocate for Megan and others who experience housing discrimination. Testing done by the Fair Housing Center supports her claim of discrimination based on source of income, covered under Ann Arbor City Ordinance, and I'll add the Jackson City Ordinance. And the Civil Rights Litigation Initiative helped Morris file a lawsuit in hopes of preventing instances like this from happening in the future. Thank you to Megan Morris for coming forward with her story, and as always, we are proud to play a role in the case brought by the Civil Rights Litigation Initiative at the University of Michigan Law School. Together, we are working to end housing discrimination. So, I saw that, and I wanted to remind our city landlords, Brian, not that you do this, I'm just picking on you, but that we do have source of income as a protected class in the city of Jackson, and it's important that we consider all sources of income when renting to them. The, I want to thank Kristi Davis. She's on Fourth Street, and she is coordinating a Fifth Ward Cleanup Day on May 6, and I have been helping her because I am so excited to have people really dig in and take over helping the city become a better place, just as Mayor Mahoney is helping the MLK CIA get cleaned up on that same day. So, city staff's going to be super busy, unfortunately, for them. I see that Allen Edwin, who I talked to at the MML Conference, what a nice company, I will say that, has a house they finished on prospect. It's now for sale, it's not for rent. But the, I don't know if the house is finished, so I just want to confirm that there, that the agreements that we're putting in place with the new construction, whether it's the rentals or houses, have the same standards that we hold, whether it's landlords or businesses, too, like, the driveway isn't finished on that one. So, I don't know if it's, I'm assuming it can't be a gravel driveway since it's...
I'll have to double check on that.
Okay. And then I know that there's this, these beautiful homes going up. I saw a couple on Ganson Street. I don't know if that's Allen Edwin. Is that someone else? Okay. Are we, I hope we're taking a minute to, like, look at the sidewalk issues, and so that when somebody buys a house, they get a complete wonderful product, you know? Because our sidewalks are messy. So, I don't know if the new builder will have to fix those, or if this, I know you were going to do a plan.
We'll make sure they're adequate.
Okay, and then, I will say, I guess thanks to Peter for bringing up the Elections Commission. That just, that blew me away when I saw that Connor Wood was running for the Elections Commission, and I'm very disappointed in that. I love being the Fourth Ward City Councilperson. I love my ward. I love this city, and, you know, I disappointed that I can't run for that seat. And then, I do agree that the voting board is tiny, so I, it's just, it's hard for me to read it on my computer, let alone up there on the screen. So, I don't know if there is something that we can do with that, so. If we can look into that, I don't know. I don't know what it takes to make those lights work. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Banal?
Nothing for me today.
Councilmember Fordgrave?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I guess, extend an apology to council and city staff here for showing up a little bit late. I apologize. I had a meeting with the LSHR Board of Trustees that I sat on that went a bit later than expected. I'd also like to apologize to my colleagues on that board for leaving early. So, I can't be two places at once, unfortunately. It would make things a lot easier if I could be.
Vice Mayor?
No comments today, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilman Dantson?
No comment.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yeah, I'm just sitting here grappling with this whole thing. So, and I do remember 2008, when Proposition 2 passed, and there was fallout with a nonprofit that I worked with at the time, and as a result of organizing around anti-racism and women of color activities. So, I mean, I think we're just trying to be cautious, and I think the concerns that were raised are, were worth us listening to and reviewing again. So, as we look and delve into these issues, different things are going to be coming up at different meetings. So, I don't, I don't feel uncomfortable with that discussion, that thorough discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things tonight. One, thank you to our Vice Mayor for holding it down, and apologize about being late, but today was a very special day. I graduate this Saturday, and today was the kente ceremony, and I did not want to miss it. So, I knew I was going to be a few minutes late, but with as busy as this week has been, I didn't get a fair enough advance to be able to give adequate notice to Vice Mayor that I would need her to hold me down. But I messaged her about 5:00 o'clock and said, I think I might need you to start the meeting for me. So, I appreciate that very much. Just want to say thank you, because I only had two minutes to thank one person, and I just want to publicly say thank you to my family who supported me through working a full-time job, working a part-time job, taking care of my responsibilities as the mayor of the city of Jackson, as well as attending college classes at the same time, and graduating over the last year. Thank you so much. For those who did applaud, I appreciate it. Just want to say a special thank you to my children, who told me, my daughter told me today, I told her I was nervous. I said, I'm nervous, like, I'm nervous to go. And she was like, Daddy, and this is the baby, out of the mouth of babes, as the Bible would say. She looked at me and said, Daddy, all you got to do is believe in yourself. I mean, man, talk about pulling at your heartstrings. I would like to start with something I don't generally do, which is address some of the public concerns that have been brought up. As far as the Elections Commission issue, while I may have the authority to make the recommendation for an appointment, that recommendation has to be supported by a majority of city council. I do not appoint to these commissions individually. And when council doesn't want someone to be appointed, no matter what I say, hence the case for Mr. Bormuth himself, they vote accordingly. While it may be unfair to some people, or the thought may be unfair, the Elections Commission as a body, not one individual presented the maps that we're presenting. We had a very in-depth presentation on the changes in those maps, and the reasons that those maps were changed. And again, when it got voted, it did not get voted by solely Mayor Mahoney. It took a majority of individuals to make those changes that we made, and I think that it is improper and unfortunate, because anybody out there has the right to run for whatever it is that they want to run for. Hence the reason why we have people who are running for mayor, right, and running for other council seats. That's why, that's why, and this is, to me, this is a test of the work that you have put in when someone challenges your seat or something happens. And I think that unfortunately, when situations like this happen, it may look one way, but just because it looks one way, that does not mean that's what it is. And I think people should know my character well enough to know that I would not intentionally place someone on a commission with ill intentions to do something intentionally to misplace someone on council. And I think that's very unfortunate spin to the story in the way that it happened. I think that's very unfortunate. To the concerns about the nonprofits that I'm engaged with, if you want to know more about the nonprofit that I'm engaged with, give me a call. My cell phone number, not a spare phone, the only phone, not the office phone, the only phone, is on the city website. I'm going to tell it to you now in case you don't have it. 517-914-2706. You can call me privately, because that is a private matter, and I will call point of order the next time it's brought up in this pub. in this public comment, is what I will do. Thank you very much, order, you ask me a question, ask, ask, order, ask me a question after the meeting, order. This is my time, you had yours, Mr. Hastings, thank you. I'm an open book, if you got any questions about what I do privately, you are more than welcome to ask me, more than welcome. Mayor Mahoney is not just involved in the cleanup day in the First Ward, and I don't think that's the only one that's taking place. I'm so glad that somebody stepped up to do it in the Fifth Ward. The entire idea that I actually, I think I talked to you about first as a councilperson, was to do a cleanup day around the entire city, all on the same day, and without me having to do anything, just speaking the idea into existence is coming to fruition, which is a beautiful thing. So, Ward Four has one, isn't that on the same date, or am I mistaken, is that a different date?
No, it's just five.
Or Ward Four?
Five's on the sixth.
Six, okay, so if, if there's any other council people, I think we have enough citizens who are willing to step up to help clean up our community, that can all step up to help clean up our community. That will conclude my comments for today. Oh, last comment, I, I came prepared to, to, to match my, my clerk today, and she didn't have her mask on, but that's okay. I'm gonna wear this for the next three meetings. And I will pass the word to city manager.
No comment tonight, let's go home. Oh, yeah, so with, it's spring, so we can't just have, we're a big city, so we have a lot to clean up, and my view on, on these cleanups are that they, they only do good things for the city, it's, it's, you know, it costs us some money, but the benefit is real. And so, the following weekend, so we're gonna have a Ward Five and a MLK core meeting on the Sixth, we'd like to have a citywide cleanup held at DPW from eight AM to twelve thirty, and it'd be nice to also kind of, if I could get the contact information from, from that person, just keep, keep it going, knowing that if they got volunteers and they have more work to do that following week, that it'd be nice to have them involved with us, and that be, maybe coordinating and getting some more stuff out of that ward and bringing it down to the citywide dump day, so, yep, that's all.
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, eight AM to twelve thirty, Department of Public Works parking lot, this Sun, this Sunday.
This time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?